Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with different talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, number one, absences, we have none. Number two, presentations and proclamations. Two A, Red Ribbon Week proclamation, the Young Marines. The City of Orange City, Florida proclamation. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League for foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and communities leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol of commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Ribbon, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in nineteen eighty-eight to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October twenty-third through thirty-first has been designated National Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I Kelly Marks, Mayor of the City of Orange City and on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty-third to the thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Orange City and urge all citizens to participate in this special observance. In witness whereof, I here have, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Orange City to be affixed on the twenty-eighth day of October, twenty twenty-five.
Photo op?
Photo op.
Thanks, buddy. Living drug-free, it's me.
Okay, moving on to two B, curb appeal awards, third quarter, Joe Ruiz.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Respect the members of the public, Joe Ruiz, Development Services Director. And so we do have a little PowerPoint for the curb appeal. So we will be presenting today the curb appeal, uh, third quarter awards for both commercial and residential properties that have been recognized um, by, by the city and by our, uh, curb appeal committee to be able to, um, care of their, of their properties and, and what they've done in this, in this quarter and on their property. So curb appeal program, uh, as, as mentioned, is the third quarter award. So the program was established in twenty-twenty, twenty-twelve, uh, by the city, essentially to, uh, recognize well landscaped properties, um, and kind of just highlight the benefits and the attractiveness that they provide to our community. Um, and so, um, we as staff and we as the city do what we can to give a, a, a little recognition to, uh, to these people. Um, as their properties stand out and as you drive by, they're usually noticeable, right? Um, as, as far as what, what they do and what they've done. And so we just want to recognize, uh, these people today. Uh, so the curb appeal program and appreciation, we present them a certificate of award, a fifty-dollar gift card. And also we post a yard sign out, out front so you can, uh, see it from the roadway. And also it gets announced on our city website, just recognizing them for what they do. Um, also, we are accepting nominations for fourth quarter, twenty twenty-five. So if you see any properties out there within our city limits, um, both residential and commercial, please feel free to, um, send those over to us over in planning. Uh, so for the third quarter, uh, commercial award, we want to present this to Eleonos Coffee. Eleonos Coffee was built in twenty twenty-four and opened earlier this year to provide the on-the-go coffee and espresso. The business design features a clean, modern appearance with accents in their signature burnt orange and with classic brick around the base. They took advantage of existing mature oaks to provide shade for their o- order window and planted several new trees in the landscape islands. Jaw-tolerant shrubs and decorative, uh, ornamental plantings were also incorporated into the landscape design. Um, typically with these new projects, we don't nominate them immediately. However, they have, um, done a good job of maintaining their landscaping. It's starting to grow in and so, uh, staff, um, noted that and voted and, and recognized them. So thank you, Eleonos Coffee, for keeping Orange City beautiful. And I believe we do have a representative, um, of Eleonos here today to, um, accept the award. Um, and so if the council can, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think the residential, uh, people are here, so if you, I think this will be the only follow-up. Yeah, yeah. Oh, they are, oh, so, one second Jude.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I'll present them. One second, sorry.
All right, well.
Yes. Applause to Eleonos. Yeah, the last couple of ones, we haven't had the people here, so it's glad, I'm glad to see that they have. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm glad you guys are getting those notices. All right, also for, uh, residential winner, so we have the O'Neal family, uh, over at ten fourteen Glaze Brook Loop. Uh, this modern brick and stucco home was built in twenty seventeen. The olive-green exterior is extended by bands of stonework and cream trim, including stylized keystones above the main garage and entryway. The split Boston hip roof lines also add a unique touch. A classy brick drive and walkway are framed by a lush lawn and landscaping, which includes mature native sable palms and shrubs and a variety of species and shapes. So thank you, the O'Neal family, for keeping Orange City beautiful. All right, if you, uh, can all, if you can all pass up to the front so we can, uh, have a photo with the City Council. I've got your bags and certificates.
I say, yeah, I say we put winners in the front next to each other.
Yes.
All right. And then Fran, can I get you over here or somebody over here in the ways a little more even? There you go. Only share. Your face does fit perfectly, though, I'm not gonna lie. All right. One, two, three. Perfect. And do we want individual pictures with each one or? It's up to you all.
Okay, we're moving on to citizens' comments. Um, Patrick Murphy, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Um, just wanted to speak briefly about something I know that's very timely, but also recent, historical, and that's about flooding. Right now, a category five hurricane is hitting Jamaica. Moving very slowly. The prediction is more than twenty inches of rain will fall there. Last weekend, just locally, had a little bit of a, uh, low-pressure trough in the area in central Florida. And members of particularly Lake County got upwards of nineteen inches of rain in a few hours. Milton hit us here with eighteen inches of rain. Lake County is actually now gonna have to repair areas that were repaired during Milton. My focus here is, I don't think, I know you guys think about it. I know the city thinks about it, but in general, I don't think we think enough about it. And in general, I don't think we do enough about it. Because imagine twenty inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period here, if it happened now. We know Graves would be impassable. We know Rhode Island would be impassable. We know every place that flooded before. And I know we got projects in and I know there's one thing on the agenda here now and everybody's working hard trying to get money to pay for the changes that need to come. But I just wanted to speak briefly and bring that up because I thought it was timely and maybe we can all think a little bit about the folks in Jamaica and again, the folks in Cuba. Because category five, a hundred and seventy-five miles per hour winds more than twenty inches of rain. Wow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your address for the?
Yep. Six, seven, eight Swan Range Road, Blue Spring Villas.
Thank you. Okay, Sharon Stafford.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Stafford, four, six, one clock Street, Orange City, Florida. Um, first, I'm going to apologize to everyone tonight. When it comes to the City of Orange City, I do get emotional. My goal is to display a professional dilemma for all. I'm here to speak about October the fourteenth, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five council meeting. I have some, I have a concern. Discussion, action, item B, eight B, the review of the county, city memberships with the Rotary Club of Deberry, Deltona, Orange City, A-one, A-B attachment. The subject matter was renewing the city's membership with the Rotary Club. Who would be the representative? And equal and fair treatment for all council members. This discussion lasts roughly fifty-eight minutes, with much of the focus being personal, such as who said this, who said that, who gonna do this, who gonna say that? As a CEO, visionary, for a nonprofit organization who mentors young adults, encouraging them to take stock in their community and their local government. I must say, I must say, I was very disappointed with the lack of professionalism shown by members of this council. Calls and conversation between council members, Rotary Club members, et cetera, things that as we, as adults and professionals should have talked about in private, one-on-one. Not make it a public, at council meeting situation. I was always taught praise in public, criticize in private, and not let it be a personal thing. It was stated that a council member contacted a vendor requesting additional tickets or things of that nature. This too was very alarming. Why not call the organizer? As an event planner, we must all work together. Just to give you an example, I'm just throwing myself out there. Everybody, somebody, is hosting an event on city's property. ABC wanna be a vendor. So they contacted the city and say, hey, I'm Senator C.D. And I want to become a vendor at event.
Okay, you have, uh, another request?
I have another request for another issue.
Okay.
So how do you want me to do this?
You can speak on the second issue now?
I'm not done with the first.
Well, your time's up, so you have to move on to the second one.
Okay, I, I go with the, finish this and then I'll just bring the second one back up at, at the next council meeting.
It doesn't work that way.
At the next council meeting?
That, your first subject's over, your three minutes is up, so if you'd like to?
Okay, but if I wanna extend my three minutes on this first issue, I can't?
Not on the same issue. Counsel?
It's three minutes per issue, madam.
Okay, so you're telling me I could bring this issue up again, come, taking my other part at another council meeting, but I need to go on to my second issue at thi- at this time? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll bring it back up at my next, at the next time. Okay, my second concern is also at the October the fourteenth meeting, the comments from City Council member. The issue and concern regarding the Orange City mascot. We know Orange City is a very unique, unique city. In all of my years of living in this city, a mascot was never considered. Yes, I agree that a mascot will add flavor. However, let the citizens of this great city make that decision. The ideal may be wonderful, but let the residents have the say. It is not a professional act for anyone to think because they purchased it with their own hard-earned money, they control who, what, when, and where. I say to you tonight, let's not create a preference now that we may regret later. Put these ideas before the residents of Orange City. Let them decide. We elected each one of you to represent the City of Orange City as a professional representative. Not to do just two things without considering the residents who you were elected by. As a CEO, visionary and mentor for young adults, I'm always concerned about encouraging all young people to take stock in our community and local government. I'm very much concerned with the action that our council members and leaders displayed. On several occasions, I have brought our young adults in this council meeting. Therefore, I must stress that eyes and ears are upon you. They are watching us as well as they're listening to us. I, I ask you to please, ble- please be cautious as you do your diligently to represent our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments this evening? Okay. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee?
Public.
Oh. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? See, and I'm gonna bring it back for the question.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Mayor Mark?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. Five ordinances, first reading, we have none. Six, public hearing ordinances, second and final reading, we have none. Seven, resolutions, we have none. Eight, discussions and action. Eight A, good citizenship selection, twenty twenty-five, third quarter. Christine Davis.
Good eve- good evening, Mayor, council members, Christine Davis, interim city manager. Tonight, we are going to discuss the Good Citizenship Award. This is a quarterly award, um, dependent upon, oh, I need my clicker. Uh-oh. I think it fell on the floor. I heard something hit the floor. Pen? Is it in the drawer? Yeah, let me check the drawer. Maybe it is a pen. Yep, it is in the drawer. Oops. Turn you on. I have a. Well, our batteries might be dead. Technical difficulties. It's, show's on. Uh, yeah, it did work, didn't it? Now maybe your fingers will be more. Does the battery stay in the screen?
Uh, the laser's working.
Yeah, true, the laser did work. He. Go ahead and advance, pretty please. This award, um, the purpose is to acknowledge or give credit to various per, uh, residents or businesses alike that have, uh, done good citizenship or something in that way to recognize the people or, and individuals, I mean, who go above and beyond for our community. Advance, please. The guidelines are nominations are accepted throughout the year. The individuals, couples, groups, or organizations, not necessarily businesses, as I previously said, can be nominated. While nominations can be submitted without limit, an individual, couple, or group, or organization is only eligible to win within or be recognized within one calendar year. Nominations are reviewed by the City Council quarterly, providing there are submissions, and council can select one or more recipients as they would like. And of course, for the record, elected officials are not received and we did not have any nominations at this time. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the criteria is they must demonstrate, uh, exceptional volunteer services that shows a dedication to making Orange City a great place to live, work, or play. They've made a positive difference in a fellow citizen's life or has demonstrated a care and concern for Orange City and its residents. It's worked with an organization or other individuals to solve problems in Orange City or has a mission to better Orange City in a positive way. They've displayed quality, uh, such as honesty, integrity, uh, service, and is an example of a posi- uh, positive Orange City resident or group, et cetera. Next slide, please. This quarter, we have three nominees, nominations, and they are for Ms. Williamson, Ms. Brooks, and Ms. Stafford. Next slide. Some of the, there's, there's a, it varies on the amount of information that somebody might submit. And so we've kind of highlighted, uh, that in your, in your pa- present, your, uh, agenda are the actual write-ups and then we've kind of narrated, uh, to highlight those. So for Ms. Williamson, for her five years, she has gone above and beyond to help her neighbors navigate both county laws, um, city laws, forms, and elections. She personally conducts weekly neighborhood cleanups, we're all aware. She reports illegal dumping works and works with law enforcement to ensure community safety. She keeps homeowners informed of what's going on with the HOA, uh, taxes, regulations, county updates, and does encourage civic engagement. She donates her own time and funds to support community events despite not celebrating them personally. She was in the paper recently for this endeavor. And volunteers without exception of reward, or, uh, expectation, I'm sorry, of award. She provides free guidance on homeownership programs like the NACA. She helps residents achieve affordable housing and financial literacy. And she's a recipient of the Bright Light Award from Just Dance and Fitness Studio. Next slide, please. Ms. Brooks, we all know Ms. Brooks. She was very instrumental in the Butterfly Garden, uh, it, in the Dickinson and then the other, uh, Wildflower Garden at Albertis. She promotes native plant growth and provides an essential food, that provides essential su- food sources for our local bees and pollinators. She inspires others to engage in environmental care and sustainability efforts through her example. And the gardening offers a welcome space for residents to gather, learn, and volunteer together to strengthen civic pride. She also demonstrates sincerity, responsibility, and long-term dedication to both the community and our environment. Next slide. Ms. Stafford, she is the founder and leader of Everybody is Somebody, Inc., which is dedicated to enriching the lives of local youth. She provides programs that build competence, improve academic performance, and develop character and social ki- skills. She works tirelessly to guide and inspire young people to make a positive impact in our community. Focused on giving youth the tools and encouragement to succeed in life through compassion and empowerment, she addresses community needs, uplifts others, and leads with a genuine spirit of care and dedication. Next slide. So at this point, the council, we ask that you guys consider the, the three recommendations for the award. I'll restate that at this point, you can reward it to one or all. Uh, the next step will be, once the selection is made, we will, we will invite the recipients to the November twelfth meeting for a presentation from council. Any questions? Have me?
Any questions, counsel? Any comments?
I have a comment. Do I know the Good Citizenship Award is recognizing people who have gone above and beyond for their community? And I know, um, Marla's here, Narada H. Williamson and Leah Brooks and then Sharon Stafford are very well-known in the community and they do come and speak at city council meetings and, you know, they, they make their, their presence known and they do try to, um, make a nice place for Orange City to be. In that regard, since they all are pretty much on the same level and my recommendation would be to select all three for this quarter.
Any other comments from the council?
I'd go along with that.
You can pull your microphone down.
I'd go along with that.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any comments from the audience? Okay, we're gonna bring it back to council. Um, the only question I have is, should Ms. Stafford recuse her vote on this, since it is a family member? It could be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, there, it would only be a conflict if there were a pecuniary gain.
Okay.
So, I, I don't think there's, uh, uh, there is no reward, no money changing hands, so I, I don't think there needs to be a recusal, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we just need a motion then.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to select the nominations for the Good Citizenship Award for this quarter for Ms. Narada H. Williamson, Ms. Leah Brooks, and Ms. Sharon Stafford.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee?
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
No.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark?
Yes. And, uh, Good Citizenship Award goes to Ms. Narada H. Williamson, Ms. Leah Brooks, and Ms. Sharon Stafford. Moving on to eight B, execution of Florida Department of Emergency Management, project number four, six, seven, three, dash, three, two, four, dash, R, East Graves Avenue Flood Risk Reduction and Adoption of Budget Amendment Resolution Number four, zero, five, dash, two, five. John Peters?
John Peters, Engineering Services Director. Um, I think at time, they're giving one of the citizen comments about flood reduction. Um, this is actually a flood reduction effort on Graves. Um, so, I hope this works. Yes, it does. Uh, following Hurricane Ian, uh, the City of Orange City made ap- Following Hurricane Ian, the city of Orange City made application to the Florida Department of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for funding to design and construct a project consisting of the following. Elevate the roadway adjacent to No Name Lake by approximately three feet. The new elevation would be approximately two feet above the hundred-year flood level. Provide drainage improvements within the adjoining John Knox Village to reduce structural flooding. During the preliminary design phase of the application, Pegasus Engineering evaluated several options for this project, inclusive of building, building sheet power walls along both sides of the roadway to inhibit roadway flooding, elevating the roadway from one to five feet. Based on hydraulic and hydrologic analysis, it was determined that elevating the roadway three feet approximately struck the balance between maximum flood risk protection resulting in the highest cost-benefit ratio. This is a layout of the area in question. The red box is the area that would be elevated. On either end, it would basically catch gray, but in the middle part, where there's a pipe, would be approximately three feet higher than the current elevation. Just for reference purposes, during Milton, we had about a foot to a foot and a quarter of water on the roadway, so we would be three feet, which would be almost two feet above where Milton flooded. The initial application was rejected because the city was unable to fully document key factors such as traffic delay and impact to public safety. At the time, during Ian, we actually did not have road closure. So we had to estimate as best we could what the delay would be. Following Hurricane Milton, we found out how, what the delay is. It actually was about forty-five minutes for people to go down Levitt, down Rhode Island while it was still open, and then back up to Graves. Once Rhode Island flooded, it was conceivable that people were gonna have to go all the way to Harley Strickland to go around, which would be even more time. But we just used the forty-five minutes of going Levitt to Rhode Island and around. So we were able to document that. I wrote a letter and certified it as being accurate. And then based on the new information, the cost-benefit ratio went from less than one point zero to, after Ian, to over three point zero after Milton. The Florida Department of Emergency Management approved this project under the Hazard Mitigation Program funding based on this new information. The application consisted of the following budget. Phase one is designed with a total cost of five hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Of that, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents comes from Florida Department of Emergency Management, and a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents would be a local share from the city. Once we complete the phase one design in August, there will be a reevaluation of the cost-benefit ratio, and if we move forward to phase two, the estimate right now is two point nine, uh, two point nine four nine, eight fifty-nine total, with two point two, one, two, three ninety-four would come from FDEM, and seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars would come from local. Tonight, we are asking the city council to approve the phase one agreement for signature by the mayor in approved resolution number four oh five dash twenty-five, which is a budget amendment to fund the city's portion of the phase one design services for this project. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions from the council? So. Okay, we just need a, a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, what is that, four-six-seven-three-dash-three-two-four?
No, right there, right there, right there.
Approved the budget amendment resolution four oh five dash two-five, and authorized the mayor to execute the FDEM sub-recipient agreement for project number four-six-seven-three-dash-three-two-four-R, East Graves Avenue Flood Risk Reduction.
We have a motion? And we have a second. Any public comment on this? See a numb, we'll bring it back for the question. Kaylee?
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and resolution number four zero five dash two-five passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight C, Orange City and DeBarry Night at the Ballpark, Daytona Tortugas, Kaylee Burleson.
Good evening. Kaylee Burleson, city clerk. Just hold this thing, to be honest. All right, so the Daytona Tortugas reached out. This is their own event. This is not an event from any private organization or outside organization. This is directly from the Daytona Tortugas. But they have invited you all to participate in their annual Orange City DeBarry Night. So far, they have it scheduled for July thirty-first, so they are looking for confirmation of council's attendance, and that this proposed date would be acceptable for you all, if you wish to participate. So unfortunately, they did email between the last meeting and today, so we thought we'd bring it to you and try to get them, you know, the confirmation they need to make their game schedule.
Do we know how many tickets are available to the cities?
That I don't know. That I don't know. Typically, when they do their private events, they typically show up with a number of tickets for staff. That seems to be what this event will be, but I don't have confirmation on the exact number of tickets, no.
My concern is it's July thirty-first, and that's so far away, and like our calendars fill up a lot. So I mean, tentatively, we could set that date, but we can't guarantee that we can all be there, because you never know what's going on, right? So I know they're trying to hold a date, obviously, for that night, but it's hard to tell what we're gonna be doing in July. That's what I was concerned about. So I mean, I'd like to say yes, because, you know, we love doing it, but maybe we just say yes, it could be a placeholder for the date. How does the council feel about that?
I'm good with the thirty-first. I can put it on my calendar as a tentative date.
Okay, just get a head nod?
For Friday, so.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to get everybody to address the, the chair when you're talking. Okay, reports. We got the interim city manager report? Thank you. Let it go.
So I took the liberty of updating the Lansdowne sidewalk project in the hopes that by doing so, you would approve and award that contract, which we did, and so that's item number one. Item number two is the electric vehicle consideration. So we've had a new item come up, and I'm sorry, Bilal left the room, but Bilal came to me and said, we, he had funding for a vehicle, and could he consider an electric vehicle? I said, well, I don't know why not, if it, you know, if we explore it and there's enough funds to, to cover it. So at this time, there's a few steps. We started working with Highland, who was the initial group that we had spoken to regarding their program, and their program is more holistic. It's a finance program. We'd be in a relationship with them for ten years, if, if we end up going with the Highland product. While I was away at the International County Managers Association's conference, I went up and spoke to a vendor that offers the cars, and said, hey, what can you give me through a state contract? So we started that conversation, and Bilal is working with them. At the same time, we learned through both Highland and the other group, and I apologize, I don't remember their name, that we needed to contact Duke, because you might not have the infrastructure where you're looking to put the charger. And so the biggest hurdle Orange City has is we do not have, as a city, have a charging station. We would be dependent on either the employee at their house or, and/or a local business such as Wawa or Target. So we have reached out to Duke. They've assigned a work order, and Bilal is also the point of contact for that. See what the, we're looking to do it at the utility building, and from there, we'll come back with some information going forward. We did meet with, one-on-one with Highland the next day after the, the council meeting, and there's been some work and exchange of information, so they can look at our fleet and, and come up with a program and what that might look like. So that is still underway. No new information on the Aligned LLC initiative. I do believe that, I received a call Friday and haven't returned it just yet, being out of the office for the conference, but I will be making a phone call and working with staff on that.
What is that, Align?
They're the group that approached us to say if we, if they find additional damage from Milton, they would help facilitate a claim.
Okay. Thank you.
The Waste Pro implementation is continuing. Last week, this report says last week, and as of last week, there weren't a lot of concerns or complaints or work orders. However, we are starting to field the, the complaints I forewarned you about with, especially commercial. They didn't get the notice that their bill had gone up until they got their October bill. And really, I want to say it's five or less that I've had to, that I've spoke, had the opportunity to speak with and, or sent to me through a, a council member. So that's not terrible. However, we're not, well, I'll caution, there may be more. The Monastery Road project is still moving along. Regarding the citizen requests, that I consider on hold. I'm not closing it out. I do know that staff had met with our citizen and had a productive meeting, but there may be more to come on that, so I'm not closing it out. Regarding the roof concerns from Councilmember Knight, there has been a report generated and issued, and I've asked that she look at that information and get back to me if she has any questions or concerns, and then once we're done with that review, I'll, I'll share it with council. The PFOs grant is technically closed for now, because we've submitted the app, and we'll just wait for them to, to notify us, so I'll probably slide that off on a pending. Waste Pro, that's closed. We do have some exciting news that we have hired, the, the new, newly funded events coordinator position that was broadcast. We've interviewed. The background's been cleared, and they started on Monday. And it was a rather quick turnaround from the time it closed to this, but they, they started on Monday, and her name is Lizette Santiago, and she hails from Deland as a prior event coordinator there, among other experience prior, but that's the most recent. The East Co- Central Florida, we did consider, submit a project for the twenty twenty-six East, East Central Florida Diamond Award. I'm not quite sure on the timeline, but we'll, we'll track that. Regarding the PIO vacancy, there's gonna be some considerable changes on Maddie's Last Day. Maddie's Last Day is November seventh. We have silos in the city where that means there's one person who does it, and does it well, and does it all, and that was Maddie. However, we are reviewing those applications as they come in, or resumes as they come in, and we are scheduling interviews. And I believe we have at least three scheduled for Thursday, Friday. So we're gonna look to fill that as, as quickly as possible, and, but I'll report more on that. The last, oh no, there's two items. Left, another new item is, we had a question come in from Mayor Marks regarding Levitt Avenue and sections. There is an assessment report that was completed and turned over, and I, I believe we're still working on one item on that, and that was the one section you followed up on, so I have not, that's still, but that's in process. It is completed, but we're going back and checking one item. And then I'll mention that the mayor brought up, under council mayors, that we have a meeting with the school, and that is this Thursday, October thirtieth, and that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Counsel, you have any questions?
I do. The meeting with the, regarding the old elementary schoolhouse, is that a closed meeting, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a publicly advertised meeting, therefore, we can only have one member at this time.
Any other questions from the council? No? Okay, thank you. I want to say thank you for these reports. They're great, by the way. It's nice to know what's going on. Okay. City clerk?
I more so have some questions for clarity. So November twelfth is your only meeting in November. Typically, the first meeting of the month, we would have your Charter Review Committee meeting, starting at five-thirty. I'm lost on what you all would like to be provided for dinner. So if you could provide me some direction for that, that'd be great.
Email you some ideas?
Sure.
Is that okay, counsel?
Of course.
That would be fine. And then, I'm not sure if anybody gave thought to the December ninth meeting that I mentioned, where we would have a CRA meeting beginning at five-thirty PM. So I'm not sure if you guys are looking to reschedule that CRC meeting right now, or if you would like to think about it, and potentially, I can bring it back to you on the November twelfth meeting, and you can give direction. However, we will have a five-thirty CRA meeting on December ninth, and then the six-thirty council meeting. So we would either have to move the Charter Review Committee to either another day, an earlier time. I'm not sure if you guys.
That was the date that you were saying there was three involved, right? You wanted to decide whether or not we wanted to move the Charter Review?
Correct.
And have the CRA meeting, because it's on the night.
Yes, so that is, we actually have, there is no other choice but to have that CRA meeting. You are required to adopt a meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six at that one, so there is, I, I really can't move that one, unfortunately. I can schedule the Charter Review Committee meeting earlier, if that works for everybody, or we can change it to a different day. I'm happy to bring this back to you on November twelfth as well, to give you time to look at your calendars.
So that would be four-thirty, if you did it earlier, an hour earlier? So I don't know about.
And then you would also have three meetings back-to-back, basically.
I don't know if we can get off, you gotta see if you can get off work, right? I mean, there's a couple people up here that work past that time, so.
Well, I also wanted to bring back that we were talking about when we send over our drafts to the city attorney and then copy interim manager, city clerk, that we were going to see what it involved in the next meeting that we had in November, and decide whether or not we were going to either do a, like a workshop or something of that nature, right? So I think we were kind of waiting on that to come back in November?
I mainly just wanted to bring it up to have it on everybody's radar again.
Yeah, I mean, I suggest that we.
Just because we only have the one meeting in November. So I'm happy to bring it back on the twelfth. I just wanted to kind of give, you know, a reminder to everybody, let's look at your calendars.
Counsel, what do you think about November twelfth? We go through that meeting, go through the first Charter Review meeting, see how it goes, and then we can call it on what the, on the, what the December, what we should do for the December meeting. Is that okay?
That would be my vote. Okay.
All right, we'll bring it back on the twelfth.
Anything else?
Um, no, that was it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
City attorney?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. It's always a pleasure to be in the great city of Orange City. Very busy, but we have nothing to report for the group.
I was getting all excited. I'm like, what do you got?
But I am always available. If you have my cellphone, I'll tell you every, every meeting. You're probably getting tired of me saying that. But I am here to answer any questions, if anyone has any questions particularly for me tonight.
Any questions, counsel?
Nothing of a legal nature at this time.
No? Okay. Well, we'll never get tired of it, so thank you.
Well, that concludes my report.
Okay, moving on to ten, new business. Any new business?
Okay, I have some new business. I would like to ask to bring back to discuss looking for a new lobbyist for the city. Tomorrow, we're going in front of the Legislative Delegation Meeting, and after that, the next step is our lobbyist should step in and try to, you know, get this thing where it's not vetoed, like last year. So I spoke with our interim city manager, and she had said that. So, um, I spoke with our interim city manager and she had said that we do have somewhat of a lobbyist through Woodard and Curran. Do you want to touch on that, do you mind?
Sure. Um, through our contract arrangement or agreement with Woodard and Curran, each year they help aid us in submitting our legislative requests. In that process, they have Gray Robinson as a lobbyist on their, um, in their, I want to say payroll for a while, but under contract. And Gray Robinson will actually look at our legislative requests and weigh in. They provide information, it, such as last year with our request, there was Senator Wright, I believe it was, who had said he really wanted only requests that had a fifty percent match or more. He would, did not want to consider it. Well, that we gained, that information we gained by that relationship with Woodard and Curran and Gray, and the, the contract with Gray Robinson. So, in having those conversations and preparing these, we, we, I did do a survey and we found that in our neighboring cities, Deland does not have a lobbyist, De- Berry does, they have one and they're looking to add another. And Deltona also has a lobbyist. So we, I've already preliminary looked at what would it, what could it look like for Orange City to have a lobbyist? And not have the arrangement where we get access to a lobbyist through Woodard and Curran. It's really a, a no-cost program for us. We, it, they, the Woodard and Curran really has a great program of helping you get grants. And then, from there, they, they, they build the relationship and so that's how we benefit from that. But we have done considerable amount of paid work with Woodard and Curran over the years. So, but that's, that's what I have to offer.
Thank you. And, and the other thing is, uh, you know, with the lobbyist, that is, we have that assistance at a small portion from Woodard and Curran is what you're saying. But to have someone that actually goes in and rallies for Orange City with our master facilities plan and all the buildings we're trying to build and all the money we need to take the burden off the citizens. So that's why I'm asking if we could bring it back and have a discussion about that. So we just need a head nod. Ms. Stafford? Okay. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay. All right, we're moving on, the approval minutes, we did that already. Uh, council and mayor's comments and reports. Vice Mayor, you got anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Arms?
I had some comments, but I left the notes at home, um, in relation to the roundabout. I did some small research, um, because I wasn't sure with, with the road being, whether it was county or city, but it's city. Um, however, the county, I believe, has s- uh, submitted a, a, a good amount of money towards the roundabout. Um, my, my thing is, I, I know that a lot of the, the people in my area, the vast majority of them are not for it. Um, and we are concerned also when the connection to I four happens, that's also going to be a problem. Um, and I think it's going to affect, uh, the traffic. And my feeling is if we're getting, and we could get more, uh, money provided, why couldn't we just apply it to a, a, a traffic light? And now I know there's some new types of traffic lights with LEDs and stuff, and I think they're cheaper. So, um, again, I'm.
So can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
So I think if you want to have a discussion about the roundabout, we should probably bring that back under, correct me if I'm wrong.
I would have to ask to clarify what discussion, because you are out to bid.
Yes.
On a grant-funded project through the LAP, which I believe is actually federal funds.
So to make sure it's in order, that's all, if it's.
So I, I just need clarification on what would you like brought back? And, because at this point, I'm guessing you might be alluding to, you don't want the project and you want to stop it.
Right.
And so, if that's the case, then I think it needs to be very clear what you're asking staff to bring back. If it's.
Right.
Too, because at this point, I don't know what else you could want.
Well, it, it's not just me, it's my constituents.
Understood.
That's why I sit here, it's for them. Um, and you, you know, you can ask any number of people that live in the area and they're, they're like, no, they don't, they don't want it. And the concern is when that connection from I four becomes a reality, that's going to apply a whole nother, uh, issue upon that.
And you think the roundabout may hurt that and not help it?
Yeah.
So I would imagine we could, knowing that, we could get with the engineers, um, and planners to, to help articulate why they either support that concern or why they don't.
Yeah, I know FDOT has contributed a considerable amount of money. So my question is, if, could we not maybe apply that to a traffic light?
Well, what we heard at the last meeting is that a traffic light is considerably more expensive. And it will not help in the traffic flow and the potential for backup to either, in either direction. Um, which would be Rhode Island backing up into seventeen or Volusia, or Rhode Island backing up into, uh, veterans. So, um, that's what.
Another option.
That's what we were, that was what was presented at that, that last meeting when you took action.
Can I ask the attorney any comment on that, as far as how far we are on that?
So we've been awarded a grant and we're out to bid for contractors. Um, and it seems like we have questions about the project. So perhaps a workshop might be appropriate, bring in the engineers, maybe they can do a question and answer. Maybe they can address your concerns, maybe they could add or subtract from the project.
That's a thought. That's a thought.
So, she could just get with you? Thank you. Jill?
He would like your permission.
Oh yeah, come on.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Um, so with the, uh, LAP process, um, we are currently, we haven't sent it out to bid yet. We're preparing the final documentation so we can send it out. Um, with the review process, uh, the way that they're doing, what, what they've asked us for is to update to the new specs, which is the new fiscal year. Um, that means we've got to engage our consultant to do that work, uh, to update the plans, um, which is going to be another few weeks of process. Um, I, I preface, I, I say that to preface that, uh, the LAP process is not, uh, it's not a fast process. It's not an easy process. Um, any little things that are changed or tweaked, um, turns things over, um, and requires a new round of review. Uh, courteously, um, they've actually told us, we will keep it in-house to our department, which is the, the final department, um, for any of these changes that they've requested. Um, the concern is, and what I brought up at the last presentation, uh, was that if we were to change the program, which is change what is already funded and approved, which is the roundabout, um, which what goes into the grant funding for the roundabout, there's a feasibility study, there's a safety study. There's a lot of data that has tracked back all the way from twenty twenty, right? Uh, twenty nineteen, when, when, uh, the city council approved the, uh, improvements, um, that they wanted to see over, over the next years. Uh, so, I, I say that to, to say that if we were to change it to a signal, um, it would bring us back to step one, um, which started for the roundabout three years ago. Um, and so, that's just something for you all to consider. Um, if, if you want to workshop it, uh, our staff is absolutely here to talk it through with you all. Um, however, my recommendation and, and just trying to shepherd it through, Becky, Becky, I would say, got it ninety-five percent of the way there. Um, she's, she's been gone now for three months plus and the last five percent have been a mission to, to accomplish. Um, and we're still working on it, I was fielding emails today to our consultant and, uh, from FDOT and David, our purchasing, um, our purchasing manager. So essentially, if we were to go that route, we would have to start from the very beginning. No, no saying if funding is going to be available for that, because when FDOT programs something, they want that money to go towards that project that everyone's invested in. Um, so, uh, yeah, it's, again, it's just three years in the works and we would have to start from scratch, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilwoman Arms? No?
I would like to update, if I may. For the record, I have, I went ahead and pulled up the weekly procurement, uh, table. And the tentative advert- advertisement date, based on the information he shared, is December twenty-eighth. So we are not out, um, for active bids, so I wanted to clarify that. And if we kept that timeline, the bids would be due in February. So, I just needed to clarify that for the record.
So if we're going to do a workshop or anything like that, we might want to do it before December, right? Okay. And if we want to do a workshop, do we have to just contact you to set that up or Kaylee or?
Being it's a new business item, I would suggest you pick a date and you have a motion. And that way, we have our clear direction on what, what we're going to be bringing back on that date and what date. Now, the only caveat is depending on what team we're bringing in, we have to see what their availability is. So we may need one or more dates. Um, or we can go to them and report back to you at the next meeting. Or I could do a survey.
Are we allowed to do a new business item now, it's out of order? We're past that, we're in council comments.
Business.
So I think we need to, if that's going to be a new business item, doesn't it need to come back at the next meeting? Thank you.
I apologize, we're on council comments.
Sorry. I just want to make sure it was right. Okay, so if you'd like to bring that back next meeting under new business and then we can address it then. Councilwoman Tiamson, you got anything?
Actually, yes, um, so I am, uh, appointed to sit on the board for, well, in the, in the audience or in the board, with the Volusia Flagler TPO. Um, so that's the Transportation Advisory Board that we have locally. So, there are a lot of, uh, plans in the works. Um, and they give us a, a long-range plan for roads in the area. And I know that they're looking at twenty fifty because they have long-term. We have some strategic inter- intermodal, is what they call it, strategic intermodal systems. And basically, it's got a lot of things that will be affecting Orange City. Um, it doesn't have an exact date, but they do have, um, a program phases and then unfazed, unfunded phases. But they're looking at the I four widening with the ten lanes going beyond the ultimate. So that's going to affect us here in Volusia County. Um, also, uh, four seventy-two widened from four lanes to six, that's Graves in Kentucky and to MLK. So all of that's going to end up coming to fruition at some point. So these are things that we have to think about when we're thinking about what we're doing here in the city. Because what we don't want to do is spend money where we, in my opinion, spend money when we are already looking at some things that are going to come to fruition. So, there's a lot of things out there that we can get ourselves educated on. Saxon Boulevard ramp, the roadway I four to Normandy, they're doing ramp improvements, stuff like that. So there's a lot, the Rhode Island extension, um, Dirks and Drive, which is not us, but it's definitely going to provide, um, a lot more traffic flow. And so when we're talking about Rhode Island and some of these things like that, we need to be cognizant of those, um, enhancements that we're going to see coming to fruition in the future. And some of these say even twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but it's, it's not set in stone, but we need to look at that. And the other thing is I went to, um, EMO two, which is the Institute for Elected Officials. And that one was very, very, um, eye-opening, honestly, because it had a lot of information regarding, um, municipal finance. It had a lot of information regarding the Building Your Cities team, personnel, those kind of things. Um, um, there was a lot of different things in making decisions and advocating for our city and our council that were brought to EMO two. And I think it's very beneficial, whomever's been to EMO, one should definitely go to EMO two and, and get that knowledge because they go into a digger, a bigger, digger, a bigger dive and give you more information, um, with regard to sitting up here on the council. So, it's, it's very educational. And that's it.
Thank you for sharing that, because I was curious about what happens at TPO and those reports really helped for us all to know what's going on with the transportation part, so, thank you. Councilwoman Richardson, you got anything? No? Councilwoman Stafford?
Yes, I do. Several concerns from residents. And when they came, come to me with concerns, I ask them to please come with a solution. Concerns they had was the signage. They said at our last, they were listening to the last meeting. We spent forty-eight minutes on talking about a banner or signs or whatever, whatever. They spoke on the mascot, they spoke on respect for residents and citizens. And they were saying, you know, now the council is sort of petty and they do this and they do that. Some of the things they said that they would like to see us focus more on so that they can understand it better would be stormwater, what are we doing about that? Everybody is, Melissa has everyone up in arms or whatever. What, they haven't heard anything else about what's going on with our police department, our fire department, or our public workers force? How's the building going, what are we doing? And are we going to lose grant money? Are we out there trying to get grant money for exactly what is going on with that? And, um, they also said on that digital sign that we spent all that time talking about, they just see the importance of why does every council person face need to be on that board when we need it for information? They was like, what's the purpose behind that when they can talk to us? And, um, and that was, that was some of the things they brought to me. That was some of the concerns people are having. They would like to see us focus most so on the business of the city and not take anything personal. They would say they would like for us to agree to disagree and move forward. So, that was some things that they brought to my attention. And they also brought to my attention, they were saying, I would sleep at the dius. I beg their partners, what people fail to realize, I am who I am. And when you see me bow my head, close my eyes, I'm praying. And I'm praying for the city of Orange City to move forward and not come to a standstill.
Anything else, Ms. Stafford? You're good? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna say something of what you asked. Tomorrow, we're going to the legislative delegation meeting in Deland, at the Deland Chambers, uh, myself and the interim city manager. What, like we did last year, we're going to go and ask for, um, money. Little over one point five million dollars to help fund three buildings. Uh, the fire station sixty-eight, the police station and the public works building. And, you know, last year it went to the governor and then the governor vetoed it. So we did get, uh, the house or the, the representatives to push some of it through. And, um, so we have a plan tomorrow to go in front of them. Um, the city manager, interim city manager's been working on it with me. And I have invited our fire department to come to represent in the room to show that we mean business. And the reason I've invited the fire department is because, uh, we had discussed that they had pushed through nine hundred thousand dollars last year for the fire department. And we see, we have seen that the legislators are paying more attention to fire than police right now. And, you know, we really need all three of these buildings. Um, but it, at least to get one going would be nice, right? So, because of the, uh, the conditions that they have, um, the interim city manager has printed out graciously reports of Fire Station sixty-eight. And when you read that report, if you could give the council a copy of that, that would be awesome, so they could see it. But it's, it, it's not good conditions for our first responders to be living in, in those quarters or working in those quarters. And so, I have three to five minutes tomorrow to sell that. Um, but also in that report is, you know, we still need a police station and our public works building is not acceptable either. So, we're going to do our best to rally tomorrow to ask for that. And, um, we're going to give them the handouts of the pictures of the Fire Station sixty-eight. And then we're going to have the, uh, some of the firemen there to represent. I'm going to introduce them out loud and say, you know, because we got to stand out. There's going to be more than a hundred people there asking for money, that's how it was last year. Luckily, we're number seven on the list, lucky seven, so we'll, uh, see what happens. But, um, that's why I brought up the lobbyists, because, you know, we worked really hard to do this last year and it went through to the governor, but then it went to the governor and it got vetoed. So if we have that lobbyist, it may help. Um, so we're going to do our. Um so we're going to do our best tomorrow. So I wanted to let you all know that it is in the works and we are going to ask for that money that we, the same as what we asked for last year. Um but you know, we had discussions on, maybe we should take it one phase at a time, not ask for all, the whole thing at once, you know? Um if you remember, a lot of the cities in Volusia got funding and we didn't get anything. So um we had to take a different approach. So we thought, well, we're going to pick our tr- our top priority right now is fire because that's what they're looking at. And um and then maybe next year we'll go back and, and head up the next mo- the highest priority, right? So, so that's what we're doing tomorrow morning at nine o'clock in Deland and we can fill you in on that. Um we can have the interim city manager maybe send an email how it went so you all know what's going on. Let's see. I got an email from a constituent, I wanted to read to you onto the record. And it says, "Good day, Madam Mayor. I wish to take a few moments to inform you of a few departments and staff that have gone above and beyond to assist me as a new resident of Orange City. As you know, most would criticize versus compliment. I'm an old army soldier of thirty years and as a sergeant major, I love slapping a soldier on the back and giving them a big hoo-ha for good work. In my fifteen months, I've been assisted by the great people in planning in many ways. I've done a lot of work on my house from a shed, pool, fence, and recently flagpole to fly the American flag. Given that, I recognize Ms Lulu, the, the depart- departed Ms Emily, Ms Becky, Ms Renee, and finally Ms Noshla, who superbly assisted with my variance request for my fence. All of these folks in planning are kind, professional and super helpful. They, they epitomize what supporting the, the community should be. Most recently, I was fueling my car at the Chevron near City Hall. I noticed some of the public works employees near their building. I walked over and introduced myself. I was warmly greeted by Jeff, who I believe is a shift lead. I told him of a tree concern which could fall on my house. Jeff not only told me about the OC connect reporting, but also took the time that, that day and looked at the tree of concern. Flash forward a week and, and after a good rainstorm, the left side of the tree fell, leaving the right side. I used the OC connect reporting on that Saturday, which was answered by Mr. Allen. He showed up at my house the very next business day to witness the precarious lean of the remaining tree tow- toward my property. Mr. Allen had a tree serviceman with him and the tree was removed the very next day. This was a great relief. Uh Mayor, you have great employees under your umbrella. This is obviously a testament of your leadership. Keep up the great work. Uh respectfully, Glenn Wildhagen, Citizen." I wanted to share that because it's so nice to have positive reinforcement of what we're doing up here. You know, we're trying to build that sense of community and, and hear not just the bad, but the good. So it was really nice to hear that, that comment and um to see that the OC connect is actually, you know, that our employees are pushing it too. So we've started this thing where it's kind of contagious and I just love that. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the block party was phenomenal. Everybody that put it together, I want to thank them for that. Um it was, it seemed like it was larger this year and spread out and it just was great teamwork with all the staff. It was just phenomenal, I can't say how good it was. Um and the um, the mascot was well-received by the citizens. We have lots of pictures, the kids were just awed by it, the adults were excited that we actually had something representing Orange City and they were taking pictures. I got hundreds of pictures and um, you know, it was just all positive. So I think it was a good reinforcement there. The fire the other night, I want to thank our firemen for showing up there on Holly, South Holly. Um it was uh very devastating for the family that lost everything in their house. Uh I spoke with them today and they came and picked up all the toys that everybody had donated and they got some food. And uh one of our neighbors in town donated furniture for them. And so they're rebuilding their life, but they're staying with a family member. And they were just uh blown away by, once again, community coming together and helping someone that's down. But when I went to the fire, I have to say it was pretty wonderful how you all worked together because I saw Orange City, Deland, Volusia County, did I forget anybody else? Deltona. So everybody just came in and I just sat there watching. It was just wonderful to see everybody working together. And everybody got out safe, I believe, except for one little bird. Um so there was, you know, other animals and um, you know, so that's what we all care about is that everybody's safe, obviously, because you can rebuild the home, but you can't rebuild the family, so. So thank you for that. And let's see, um I think that's it. So I thank you all for everything you're doing up here and uh I'm, I'm real proud to say that we're really making a difference with the, with the community and the OC connect. I have people coming to me on a daily basis, just saying that they're really starting to see a change in Orange City. So good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Oh, motion. Can I have a motion for meeting adjourned?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None in pose? Motion adjourned, sorry.
That's okay. You could read our minds.
It's too early. It's too early to.
How do we know? Smell this burning smell, I might care of anything.